Hey, 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 everybody. So I'm gonna give it a sec like usual for folks to get in here. Got a few pieces of information that I want to share with you guys and kind of let you know where we are and what's going on and, you know, and some things that we want to be mindful of and aware of as we head into this week. So, um, let's see, I'll wait till everybody kind of gets in here and then we'll start to chat, okay? So, um, so, hey, good evening Patricia, how are you? Hey, what's up Angie? Hey Suzanne, hey Heather, hey Alicia, hey Lakeia, hi everybody, hey Randy. Get to meet you in person tomorrow night. Hey Nicole, how are you? Hey Alia. Hey Daryl, how are you? How is everybody? Hey Ladonna. So I'll give it just a second. Hey Maureen, glad to see you as well. Um, you know, it just seems like this is a never-ending thing. You're welcome. Haley, hey Lori. Yeah, there's a lot and it just seems to kind of keep coming in. To be quite frank, it's a little, it's a lot right now to digest, to kind of pull apart, to piece apart. Hey Chrissy, hey Jamie, hey Susan. Alright, so I'm gonna quit saying hi to everybody, just know that I'm saying hi. Okay, um, so, um, yeah, so I want to start off by, um, I want to start off by talking about the COPA really quickly. Hey Kim. And this part is important and I want everybody to pay attention to what I'm about to tell you because there's a lot that I don't think people really truly understand about this COPA, what it means, and just how things, how things are really being done. Valid Health would like for you to believe that this COPA is a done deal and you're just stuck with it and that's the way that it is and just suck it up and here we go, we're gonna move forward, okay? And you guys have heard me talk about the, um, there's a certificate that was issued just like that says, you know, hey, this COPA can be modified at any time, but I want to give you a little bit more information about what that looks like and how that works. So, when you look at the Certificate of Need, okay, and I'm, I'm on page 44 of the Certificate of Need. So, understand, this Certificate of Need is what Commissioner Dreisner was just referring to last week when he stated that if, if Valid Health took any actions towards reducing the NICU at Holston Valley from a Level 3, any lower, that it would be a violation of the terms of the Certificate of Need, I mean, Terms of Certification, violation of the Terms of Certification. So, I'm looking at the Terms of Certification and I'm on page 44 and I want to give you some information so that you guys understand exactly what it says. So, um, I'm at 8.01 and it says, "Proposed COPA modification by the department." This COPA can be modified like fluidly by the department and also by Valid if they submit things, but let me just explain this part. In addition to any COPA modifications described in 6.05, the department, and when it says the department, that's referring to the State Health Department, may at any time notify the new health system, that would be Valid, of one or more proposed COPA modifications and provide a written explanation and any supporting documentation. The department's proposed COPA modifications may include, but not be limited to, changes to one or more of these Terms of Certification which are not being satisfied, or to address circumstances which demonstrate that the affiliation is not meeting objectives of lower healthcare costs and improved quality of or access to healthcare services. Now, this is incredibly important, I want y'all to listen to this. The affiliation is not meeting objectives of lower healthcare costs, right? Improved quality of or access to healthcare services. So, we all know that there have been changes and things that have happened by Valid that definitely don't, that have not lowered costs and in fact may have increased costs and have limited access or reduced access to healthcare services. So, um, I want to talk about service lines. So just follow me and I know I'm gonna be a little bit technical, but if you just stick with me, I'm also gonna talk to you a little bit about some more issues that I found with Commissioner Dreisner, as well as my Hawkins County folks. I need you to, I need you to stay on here, because I'm gonna want you to pick up the phone and call some of your, some of your folks by the end of this live. So they, they might not be happy, but, um, but you know, tomorrow night we're having a, we're having a meeting and, uh, and it's important that all of your officials be held accountable for their behavior, for their meetings, for their affiliations and, and potential conflicts of interest. So if you'll hang tight, I'm gonna get there, but I'm gonna walk you through this thing, okay? So, one of the things that the COPA says on page 8 is it identifies and explains like what these different terms mean that you find all throughout the COPA. Um, so, one of the things that, um, public advantage, so the COPA is a cooperative agreement for public advantage. Well, what do they mean by public advantage? Public advantage means the likely benefits accruing from the cooperative agreement outweigh, get this, by clear and convincing evidence, any disadvantages attributable to a reduction in competition that may result from the cooperative agreement, as determined by the department from time to time in accordance with the COPA, these Terms of Certification and the COPA Act. So, listen to me, so this is what we're saying. They are saying, listen, we've got to know that by clear and convincing evidence that this merger and the lack of competition that this is going to bring about, right? Because mountain states and Walmart were competitors, right? So by merging together, there's no longer this competition and we need to know that the public, you know, that the advantages far outweigh by clear and convincing evidence the fact that you two guys are no longer competing, not just that there's nobody else competing with you, but that you guys are no longer competing with each other. So I think we can all agree that this public advantage is not present, right? Um, and definitely not by clear and convincing evidence. So when we have these conversations with our elected officials, when you file complaints, the things, the words, the terms that you want to be using are public advantage, public disadvantage, right? Terms of Certification, because these are the things that matter, this is the language that, uh, that they need to evaluate and really take a look at. Now, I want to point out, last week I talked to you all about the changes at Allendale and I talked to you about the facility that they're remodeling that's right behind Indian Path and how it's going to change how you're paying and what your, what your costs are for your infusions and your treatments and, you know, now there's gonna be a facility fee and so forth and so on. Well, I want to, I want to point something out and this is a question that I have for Commissioner Dreiser as well as for the Attorney General's Office, because according to page 8, the definition of service line is, it means the following service lines at a COPA hospital. Orthopedics, Pediatrics, Surgery, Obstetrics/Gynecology, Cardiovascular/Heart, Cancer, Emergency Medicine, Neurology, Neurosurgical, Psychiatric/Behavioral Health, Neonatal and Trauma. Those are the service lines. Now, what does it tell us about the service lines? Listen to what it says. "Delete or repurposing of other service lines and facilities." So get this. "With respect to any existing or future service line, including any material component or product of a service line, or existing or future facility of the new health system that is not a COPA hospital, the new health system shall provide the department with 90 days prior notice of any proposed deletion or repurposing of the entirety of any such service line, any key component, or thereof of any such facility." So here's what I can tell you. I can tell you that on October 8th, let me just give you the document, okay? On October 8th, Valid Health got a, got a permit and they got a permit to do the facility that's gonna replace Allendale. And let me tell you what that said. Do, 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 do. Hold on one second. Oh, I already pulled it down from somewhere else. Give me two seconds. This is what I get for operating on multiple devices today. Here we go. Alright, so here it is. On October 8th, there's a company called Goins, Rash and Kane, okay? For Valid Health Infusion Therapy at 2202 North John B Dennis Highway, alterations, in other words remodeling of the building, was $2,476,000 on October 8th. So here's what we know, is cancer is considered to be a service line according to the Terms of Certification. And what this just said is that if you're planning to do anything that's a, that's a future part of the service line, that's a part of the existing service line, anything that's a key component to the service line, anything that you're planning to do, you have to notify the Department of Health, the State Health Department, 90 days in advance. Here's what I can tell you, is that Valid Health has not submitted these changes for this facility 90 days prior to them building this facility. Matter of fact, the facility is over 70% complete. It is scheduled to open for business January 21st. So for me, and this is what I'm submitting tomorrow morning and what I would encourage you to submit tomorrow morning to the State Health Department and to the Attorney General, is that Valid Health is already in violation of these Terms of Certification. Does anybody hear what I'm saying? And just tell me if y'all think I'm reading this right? Because here's what it says. "With respect to any existing or future service line," remember I read to you what service lines were, service lines included cancer, and it says, "including any material component or procedure of a service line." Well, infusion therapy would be a procedure of the service line, would it not? It says, "or existing or future facility of the new health system that is not a COPA hospital, the new health system, that's Valid, shall provide the department 90 days prior notice of any proposed deletion or repurposing of the entirety of any such service line, any key component or procedure thereof of any such facility." So what I hear, what I hear is very clearly, without a shadow of a doubt, Valid Health is in violation of the Terms of Certification. I'm submitting that tomorrow morning to the State Health Department and to the Attorney General. I encourage you to do so as well. After this live, I will be posting these documents, I will reference these pages, I will give you the verbiage, I will even give you this. Kudos to the person who, who sent me, because I knew about the facility, I got pictures of the facility, and then someone today sent me this little snippet from the Kingsport Times for, you know, for your information section, that says, "Goins, Rash, Kane Incorporated for Valid Health Infusion Therapy, 2202 North John B Dennis Highway, alterations, $2,476,000 on October 8th." So they got a permit for a 2 point, almost $2.5 million renovation. Right, well, it doesn't say that it has to be, it says, it specifically says, it doesn't have to be a part of the COPA hospital, it just has to be a key component or procedure of a major service line, a service line which cancer is. And here's the thing, Medicaid, it's either Medicaid or Medicare that has a stipulation about billing that says, if the facility that you are being treated in is within 250, I believe it's yards, and I keep saying I need to look it up, but I'm, I'm just a little swamped guys, um, that, um, that, that, that that's what constitutes a hospital fee or a facility fee. So very clearly what I see is a violation for the Terms of Certification and that's what I'm going to be expecting the Tennessee State Health Department to act on, okay? Now, that's the stuff that I really wanted to go over, um, about that. Hold on, let me see this part. So, oh, let me just keep going. So here's what it says. "The following are examples of material deletions or repurpusing that would require notice to and approval of the department. Termination of a cancer service line at any COPA hospital, termination of a cardiovascular service line, any other change to the nature of a service line or facility that would be a type that, that the resulting service line or facility would, in the ordinary course, require a Certificate of Need or other regulatory approval before providing services." Now, this part right here is important, because this is what applies to the NICU. Yeah, so Amy, so they didn't have to, um, they didn't have to ask anybody about closing down the cardiac cath lab at Indian Path, because it's actually included. So, um, so if I'm correct, Holston Valley Medical Center has a cardiac cath lab. So one of the things that this, uh, this certificate, this Terms of Certification says is that, that they were allowing Valid Health to eliminate any redundancy in services that exist between Indian Path and Holston Valley. That's what it said, okay? So that's why you see a lot of things changing from one of these facilities to the next is it's actually in this Certificate of, this Terms of Certification, okay? So, uh, so I just, but here's the other piece of it. So this part right here is very, very interesting, because here's what it says. Um, "If you're gonna make any other change to the nature of a service line or a facility that would be the type resulting in where a Certificate of Need or regulatory approval would be required." Well, so for neonatal units, for neonatal care, a Certificate of Need is required, okay? So, understand that when Valid Health printed up their new brochures and they, and in that brochure, they eliminated in writing the NICU portion, um, that is a, that is a huge, huge deal. Actually, no, IPC, Indian Path's not gonna close. Um, so let me just say this, here's what you all need to understand, there's a couple of pieces to this, okay? First of all, none of the clinical hospitals, the clinical, the hospitals have to be kept open for at least five years as clinical and medical facilities. That's what, that's what the agreement says. So nothing is closing right now in this moment, right? Indian Path is not going to close, because they are building that cancer infusion facility, that infusion therapy facility, right behind Indian Path, in order to help all of Indian Path get a 340B pricing, right? So if the entire hospital gets 340B pricing, then it's 35% off everything that the hospital gets in terms of their prescriptions and medications and all of that. Now, you as the patient are not getting 35% off, but Valid Health is. Okay, so, that's, that's what I need you to understand. Hey Julie, no worries. So, correct Kim, and as a result, get that 340B pricing for all of Indian Path. You got it. The problem with that is, that is a significant piece of a major service line that's outlined in this, in the, in the Terms of Certification, so that is a violation, okay? But Valid Health put out these new pamphlets that I showed you the other day, and in those pamphlets, it deleted out the information about the NICU and it switched over to say that it just had neonatologist and perinatal, perinatal natologist, um, on call 24/7, right? So what that demonstrates is bad faith on the part of, um, Valid Health, because they started to do those things without getting approval from the state. Hey Stephen. So you're already putting in writing, advertising, pushing out to the public that, that service lines that would require a Certificate of Need have changed or are being deleted. That's a problem. So again, I'm just going off of their document and what they legally say they can and cannot do. So, I'm gonna be posting this information after I get off the live, so that you guys know what to say and what to use. What I'm going to recommend and what I'm going to ask you to do is not just watch this live and share it a bunch of times, although I want you to do that. I want you to pick up your phone tomorrow, I want you to get at your keyboard tomorrow and I want you to send emails and phone calls to the, to the Tennessee State Health Department as well as to the Attorney General, Commissioner Dreiser, and to the Governor's Office. Why? Because they already, uh, the legal counsel at the Governor's Office is already looking into the conflict of interest that John Dreisner has with all of this. Now, since we're gonna talk about John Dreisner, let's just go there next. Um, okay, so, in the past, what you've heard me talk about is John Dreisner's wife, Jana Dreisner, is listed on the Valid Health website as a Medical Director of Psychiatry in Dickinson County, right? We know that she has a company called Starfish Health LLC that does telemedicine for behavioral health and psychiatry issues. And we know that she has a contract to do those things with Valid. Now, here's the thing, the other day, one of my other folks, right? One of my other folks, uh, sent me this and I covered it on the live and I talked to you about John Dreisner's financial disclosure. And here's what his sources of income, this is from his April 9th, 2018 filing, okay? And guys, listen to me, this is what I want to, this is what I want you to hear me say, okay? I want us to focus on things that help the conversation. I want us to talk about like, like actual violations, things that actually matter, not, 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 not these broad strokes of accusatory things. Um, I want us to stay on, on track, right? Like, like we already know how Valid Health operates, right? So we don't gotta talk about it anymore, let's talk about the things that are going to produce results. Let's do that, okay? We already know, okay? So let's just stay, stay, stay focused and stay productive in our energy, okay? So, listen. The Statement of Disclosure of Interest, the SS-8004 that John Dreisner filed on April the 9th, 2018, his sources of income are listed as the Tennessee Department of Health for himself, Jana Dreisner, self-employed, his wife, school, Tennessee School for the Death, and that's from his wife, Senior Life Solutions spouse, and then Starfish Health P L L C spouse. Well, we've already talked about Starfish and its relationship to Valid. Now here's what I found really interesting today that was sent to me, directly from the Valid Health website, hold on, I'm gonna pull it up for you. Directly from the Valid Health website, it lists, can y'all see, hold on, I'm gonna see if I can get it to, y'all see that? Senior Care. And do y'all see what it says? It actually says, "Help your loved ones older than 65 improve life skills and adjust to the challenges of aging through Valid Health's Senior Life Solutions." That's what it says. Senior Life Solutions. Well, that's really funny, because that's the name that John Dreisner lists as a, as a source of income for his wife and therefore a source of income for himself. So my question is, are both of his wife's companies contracted through Valid Health? Because that's the way that it sounds. Now, I literally just got this at 8:24 this evening, so I haven't had a chance to look all the way through it. Barbara, honey, I haven't gotten through all of the messages that I've been sent, so you may have sent that, this one I just happened to see, because I was doing work specifically on this. So I appreciate it if you did. So these are the things that we want to be looking at and digging a little bit deeper. So the next, next thing that we're gonna look at is, um, next thing that we're gonna look at is when was Senior Life Solutions, um, Senior, it's Senior Life Solutions, right? We're going to need to look and see, okay, so is that, um, yeah, and I do want you to dig, I do want you guys to dig, I just, I'm one person, so I don't always get to all of the, I don't get to all of the messages. I still have some like that are, that are really important, like that I've read at the time that I still need to come back and, and respond to, you know what I mean? So, um, so I definitely want to do that, but what, what that seems to me is the second conflict of interest, both through his wife, that John Dreisner has with Valid Health. That is a problem for me. Um, it makes me wonder about his ability to, um, to oversee this, uh, in, in a good way. And I'm hearing rumblings about Bill Lee and Scott Nieswenger as well being buddies. So, you know, um, I think that it would be prudent to start to look into Bill Lee to see what are his sources of income, what are his relationships to potential, you know, to companies that may have additional conflicts of interest? That's something to consider as, uh, as we get ready to, um, to change out governors. So that's another piece of this puzzle that's really, really interesting and need to be looked at. Um, the last one that I want to get to before I get off of here, um, is, is the fact that we're gonna be in Hawkins County tomorrow at the, um, at the council, at the, at the council meeting, right? And here's what we want to talk about. So, it was brought, now here's what I know that was a matter of public record. On November 21st, um, Valid Health met with Hawkins County Public Safety Committee and they met with, um, hold on one second, let me just make sure that I, that I give it to you correctly. Um, give me one sec, guys. Oops, hold on. Hawkins County. So here's what I know, is that on November 21st, um, Valid Health met with Hawkins County and they met with their public, their Public Safety Committee, um, back on November 21st. Now here's what's interesting, as we got ready to go through, I, I know it does Cheryl, that's why, that's why we've asked for, um, the legal counsel for the governor to open up an investigation into the Commissioner's conflicts of interest. Okay, so follow me. So they met with the Public Safety Committee on November 21st and everybody knows that Valid Health was scheduled to be at tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting along with myself, Dr. Spivey and Tim Bradshaw. Um, so I had heard last week, um, because you know, there's, there's birds everywhere, uh, what I had heard last week is that on Wednesday of last week, Valid Health had asked to meet with the Public Safety Committee again, um, and they also had invited at least one or more members of the Commissioner, the council, okay? Now, this is what got, this is, this is what I found very interesting about this. Because what I was told and what I've been able to confirm so far, is that one person, uh, one Commissioner actually attended that meeting on Wednesday of last week. And I was told that that person is John Metz. And my understanding is he's the second in command for the council meeting tomorrow night. Now, here's what's interesting about him. His, um, well, first of all, let me just tell you this, Valid Health is not going to be at the meeting tomorrow. This is, this is the email that they sent. They sent an email to the, um, officials of Hawkins County, saying that they were not going to be there and here's what it says. "Ballad Health leaders were pleased to provide detailed information to the Public Safety Committee and other members of the Hawkins County Commission on November 21st about our plans for advancing trauma and children's healthcare across the region. We have also had a number of follow-up meetings with EMS as well as with the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee." We understand that, which is Gary Morell. "We understand that Monday's meeting will allow for public comment that was not provided in the earlier meeting. We believe our previous presentation and subsequent conversations with Hawkins County leaders have provided sufficient background for the commission and we look forward to working with local EMS leadership to create a first-class regional trauma center." So, here's what I want you to understand, the meeting is still on tomorrow, right? The public is still gonna be there, I'm still gonna be there, but Valid Health has now talked to Hawkins County leaders previously. Now, how many did they talk to? Because if it's three or more, that's a violation of sunshine law. What I do know is that they talked to John Metz last week. Now, why is that important? Well, it's important, because John Metz is the CEO of a company called M B M, Mary Bravo Mary, right? M B M Printing is John Metz's company. Well, John Metz's company specializes in pharmaceutical and medical device printing. That's what his company does. Now, let me just say this. I can't tell you that his company has a contract with Valid Health, I can't tell you that he's been promised a contract with Valid Health. All I can say is, it's one hell of a coincidence that his company specializes in medical device printing and pharmaceutical printing and he is one of the only council members that's invited to a private meeting with Valid Health last Wednesday and they feel like they've done a good enough job that they don't need to attend tomorrow. Just saying, just throwing that out there for you all to digest. Well, Gary Morell, from my understanding, is part of, um, the Public Safety, um, Public Safety Committee. So, he does, because they've met with Valid Health twice, okay? So, um, I love, I love it when folks are messaging when I'm on live. Um, yes, so Senior Life Solutions is also connected to Valid Health, um, that's the third confirmation that I've gotten. So, yeah, John Dreisner, you're in bed with Valid Health via your wife through both of her companies, okay? So, what, what, what I want you all to do, what I want you to do, I want you to pick up the phone and I want you to call, um, I want you to call John Metz tomorrow. Matter of fact, you should pick up the phone and call all of the Hawkins County Commissioners and ask them, what do you do for a living? What company do you work for? What company do you own? Do you have any sort of conflicts of interest with Valid Health? Because the incestuousness of this, of this company throughout the region is mind-boggling. It's everywhere. Well, so mark my understanding as Gary Morell is, not John. Well, so Mark, my understanding is Gary Morell is, not John. That's my understanding, don't know. Bottom line is, he's still a commissioner. Correct, Kathy. This is even more reason that everyone in Hawkins County and surrounding areas needs to come out tomorrow. Correct. And if you scroll to the bottom of the site, they also show... I swear, I love y'all some, yeah, I love y'all sometimes. Yes, okay, so Senior Life Solutions, um, is Jana, as well as... Holy geez. Starfish, yeah, thank you. Okay, so just so you guys know, that's just another piece of this puzzle that definitely needs to be, needs to be looked at, needs to be addressed. Um, all of those different things. Thank you, Heather, EMS, that's what I needed, EMS Director. Because, so, oh, one more piece of information. If you live in southwest Virginia, I need you to understand what Ballot Health is. Thanks, Mark. I need you all to understand what's happening. So Ballot Health, uh, they sent their folks to Eric Deaton and some of the other folks on Friday, went to Richmond, Virginia. And when they went to Richmond, Virginia, somebody tell Jamie where the meeting is tomorrow night, because I honestly don't know. I'll look it up tomorrow or be wherever somebody tells me to be. But they went to Richmond, Virginia, and they had a meeting with, um, with EMS, um, with, with EMS folks up there, and here's what they're trying to do. They are literally trying to change the EMS guidelines for southwest Virginia when it pertains to, um, trauma levels and how and where you have to take patients. They are, so listen, they are literally trying to change the existing EMS guidelines about where and how you take people depending upon their, how they are assessed by EMS. They went to Richmond, they took the southwest EMS, uh, regional guy with them. And that's what they're, they're attempting to do. So here's what they're doing. They wanna make the guidelines fit how they want things to happen based on the changes they want to make in this area for this region. How about that? Guys, this goes real deep. This goes real deep. If you are not picking up the phone, if you are not calling, if you are not filing your complaints, if you are not emailing, I don't know what you're doing. I will look at it, catch on. Because this is not going away. It's only going to get worse. Something has to be done about what's happening. Because it's, I mean, it's big. No, what they said they weren't doing during the WISE meeting, so here's what they said they weren't doing during the WISE meeting. They said that they were not trying to establish their own private EMS system that would put the county's EMSs out of business. But what they are doing, and he said it at WISE, he said they were going to Richmond, um, the next day. We were in WISE on Thursday. So they said they were going to Richmond on Friday, and they did. And they've already been having these meetings talking about changing, uh, different definitions, different guidelines, specific for this region. That's okay, Kristi. They really think that they have enough money to buy off and, and get people to do whatever it is that they want them to do. And your, your well-being is at stake, folks. Your well-being is at stake. So you need to, you need to get fervent, uh, about your protesting. You need to be diligent in your phone calls and in your efforts. Because this is not going away. Now, let me say this. Let me say this. The, the Copa has an annual review. That annual review will be either in January or February of, of 2019. They have to announce when that annual review is at least three weeks in advance, okay? So follow me. If the review is going to be, um, at the end of January, then that means they would have to announce it within the next two weeks or so, right? If it is in February, they're gonna have to announce it by the middle of January. So guys, any way you slice it, within the next three to four weeks, we are going to be told when the annual review is. Here's what I'm going to encourage you to do. I'm going to encourage you to go to the annual review in Nashville, Tennessee. I will be there. I'm talking to some other folks about carpooling and riding down together. It is, it is, it is prudent that you guys show them that you, that you care about your healthcare. Um, so here's the thing, Amber. I don't know about Virginia, because what, Virginia's Copa, Virginia's Cooperative Agreement was a lot less restrictive than Tennessee's. And on a lot of things, Virginia said, "We will default to what Tennessee requires." Okay? So that's what they said. Well, no, the reason why they're going to Richmond, Mary, is because Richmond is who, is where they, uh... Richmond is where they make those decisions. Like, that's like where EM, that's where the, ah, EMS, whatever, state-level EMS, that's where they are. It's not that they're trying to get Richmond to put your life in, it's that, it's that, uh, that that's where the organization is that they would need to meet with. Because like, you have to, you have to get it changed at a state level, um, in order for those guidelines to change in any region. So that's what's, that's what's, that's what they're trying to make happen. Yes, Angela, we'll be there together. Thank you, Richard. I'm glad y'all are here to help fill in the gaps for me. So, um, so I'm just kind of letting you all know that these are the things that are coming up. So I'm going to encourage you. It's the beginning of the new year, so you guys should have, like, PTO time you can take, vacation time you can take, those types of things. Those are the things that you need to be doing it. No, so it has to be posted, uh, it has to be posted on the Tennessee State Department's, um, website. It has to be posted under the Copa section. Well, as soon as they announce it, they have not announced yet, um, they have not announced yet when the, uh, when the annual review is going to be. When they do, of course, I'll share it like always. Um, and just, just one housekeeping note. If you are part of the private Facebook group, I use that group to post up documents and files that I can't attach in my notes on my Facebook page. That's all that group is for. It is for you to go in, for you to look at documents, download documents, all of those things. What I do not want it to be is a dumping ground for your frustrations, your concerns, and your speculations. I get that there's a lot going on, and I get that it's frustrating, and I get that there's a lot that you guys are thinking through, but I do not want that group to become a bitching playground, for lack of a better word. Yes, Daryl, it is open to the public. The Coke, the review is open to the public. It's open to the public. So, so hear my heart when I tell you I get your frustrations. Hear my heart when I, when I say I get it that, you know, when you read stuff, you just go, "Holy crap, that's not true," da-da-da-da-da-da-da. I get that. But listen, there's enough posts on Facebook for you to voice and be vocal about your opinions and what you think, that you don't need to do it in that private group. That group is just a place, like, I need to, I need to put some more documents up in there now, and I will continue to do that. But that group is not a place to debate back and forth about what you don't think or do think, or what lies are being told, and who's doing what, and who's kissing who's cousin. Like, just not in that group, okay? We have a lot of other places where that takes place. So I just wanna keep that group clean. Let it be for information and for your digestion and for your own knowledge and for your own resources, okay? Got it. Um, so that's it. That, that's the pieces of information that I wanted to give you. So I wanted to let you know that private meetings were held in Hawkins County last week. You need to be contacting folks and asking questions about that. I wanted to let you know about John Dreisner's second, uh, conflict of interest. Um, well, Sandra, it is, like, people can't post, but they can comment. I don't want, I don't wanna turn commenting off. I don't feel like I should have to do that. We're all grownups, right? So, and I feel like if somebody has a legitimate question about the information being shared, I want them to be able to ask that comment, you know what I mean? I don't wanna, I don't, I don't feel like I should have to, like, turn off all commenting. It's already turned, like, posts are turned off. I shouldn't have to turn off commenting as well, you know? So, um, but I wanted to let you know about the things that are happening with John Dreisner, um, things that are happening in Hawkins County. What we know to be apparent terms of certification, um, violations based on what they're doing with Allen Dell and, uh, and potentially the, the pamphlets for the NICU. Those are things that, you know, appear to be direct conflicts in this Copa. So what I will be doing is I will be posting these. Um, and I will, I will post pictures of them. Um, yeah, Stephen, it's incestuous, so that's just what came to mind. I'll be posting these on my page, that you know the verbiage and what to refer to. And I will be, um, I will also be posting it in the private citizens group. I'm going through the rest of my documents because they all got mixed up, and holy jeez, I'm trying to piece them all together. So that's it. Other than that, I will see you in Hawkins County tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Somebody will tell me where to be, and I will be there. Um, and then I'm gonna, and then I'm probably gonna head back to Atlanta for a few days. I need, I need, I need to get into my own space for a minute and take care of some things. So, uh, so that's it. That is all I've got tonight. Um, I appreciate you guys for being on here with me and for your diligence and for all your digging. Listen, if you send me something that is very important and you message me, just comment, tag me, do something to let me know, because I have like 40 or 50 of them to still get through while I'm trying to do regular life, okay? So, you know, don't, you know, don't, don't blame it on my, my heart, or my head for that matter. Just blame it on the fact that I'm human and I can only do so many things at one time, okay? That's all I got. Um, so, uh, y'all know how I end this thing, right? Be amazing, be light, and be love. I'm out.